Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the October 14th Committee of the Whole Meeting to order at 6:30 PM. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to all of our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating tonight remotely via WebEx. And as a starting point, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the day today. This is the Observed Indigenous Peoples' Day. And so let's take a moment to recognize the first inhabitants of the area that is now Issaquah. Today, please take time to reflect on the indigenous people that came before us, as well as our respect of these lands and each other. We acknowledge that we're on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples, who have reserved treaty rights to this land specifically, both the Snoqualmie and the Muckleshoot Indian tribes. We thank the caretakers of this land, who have lived and continue to live here. So please take some time to educate yourself on the contributions and the continued work done by our tribes, and consider supporting their efforts to protect, respect, and restore these lands. Members of the tribes recognize and celebrate today as important to them, as it was the day that they received federal recognition, which, as a society, is very important. These tribes are still here and thriving and are a sovereign nation. I think it's important to recognize the stewardship that they have provided on this land on which we now reside. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize this as an important day. So moving on to the rest of our agenda, we have public comment followed by two agenda items. So with public comment, there are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. So, public comment. Members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make a comment, you'll raise your virtual hand. If you're on a phone, you're going to press star three. If you're on a computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon, or send the host a chat message. So if you are in the room and did not sign up, I'll ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. So, clerk, if we'll just wait a moment and see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. Has anybody signed up or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
No one has signed up, and we actually don't have any virtual members of the public with us tonight.
Okay. Do we have anybody in the room who would like to make comments? Being none, I will just make a reminder that written comments can be submitted at any time by emailing citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. Okay. So, looking ahead, our first agenda item is COM 0037, which is the 2025-2026 Legislative Agenda, and presented by Shelley Helder, our lobbyist.
Good evening, Council President, Council members. Good to be with you tonight. This is going to be the first touch, first discussion for, in preparation for the 2025 State Legislative Session. So, next slide. Tonight, I'm going to start with an overview of what we expect from the 2025 session. I plan to review the city's draft legislative agenda, as well as the policy manual, and then I'll wrap up by talking about next steps. After my presentation, I look forward to any questions or comments that you all may have, particularly looking for comments and feedback on the draft documents. Next slide. So, the 2025 Legislative Session is going to be the first of a two-year biennium, which means it's going to be a long 105-day session. The legislature's primary task is to adopt new operating capital and transportation budgets. They'll also consider thousands of bills. On the budget front, the September revenue forecast projected a decrease of roughly $525 million within the current budget cycle. So, the current budget has the buffer to accommodate that decrease, but what the implication of that is, is that revenues are declining, not increasing. And so for the upcoming biennium, that's going to present challenges for state budget writers. In addition to the revenues not growing at the previously forecasted rate, there's also statutory obligations that the legislature is going to be faced with. One of them, for example, is an expansion of the Working Connections Childcare Program. Expanded eligibility goes into effect November 1, and so that's going to increase the cost to operate that program. Of course, the legislature will need to adhere to the law that they recently passed and fund that program. So it's just one example of the state's costs increasing, and yet revenues not keeping pace. That's on the operating side of things. The state's transportation budget is in a similar position. Transportation revenues continue to decline; they have for many years. And, as you all are experiencing at the local level, the cost to implement projects also is rising. The way the state has addressed this challenge over the last several years is anytime they need new funding, or anytime they want to fund projects, they have to develop a revenue package. In other words, they have to create a new revenue source and then invest that revenue in projects throughout the state. There are already discussions happening about a new revenue package, simply because the transportation budget is in such a dire state. It typically takes several years for a revenue package to come to fruition. And so while conversations are beginning, I don't necessarily expect something to pass in 2025, though anything is possible. The capital budget, the third and the smallest of the state's budgets, is a function of the size of the operating budget. So with the operating budget not necessarily growing in the way that it has in years past, the capital budget will not be growing at the same pace either. So we still expect there to be opportunities for funding within the capital budget, but not necessarily to the same, I guess, magnitude that there has been in previous budget cycles. Looking at the political context, everyone knows there's an election in a few weeks. There are three initiatives on the ballot that will have substantial impact on the state's budget. And so depending on the outcome of those initiatives, that will also influence budget decisions come next year. We don't expect a shift in who holds the majority in either chamber, though there is a possibility that Democrats will secure a supermajority in both the House and the Senate. That is significant, because a supermajority is what's needed in order to incur debt, which is how both the transportation and the capital budgets have historically been bipartisan budgets. So there is a chance that we would see a capital or transportation budget that is not developed in a bipartisan fashion. Though just because Democrats have a supermajority doesn't mean that they would choose to do Finally, the start of a new biennium does mean that there's a redevelopment of committees, both in the makeup of who serves on the committees, the leadership of those committees, and the jurisdiction. So we would expect certain committees to remain the same from past years, like, for example, transportation. I don't think that committee's going anywhere, but there will be a reordering depending on the issues that the different caucuses and different leadership teams decide they want to focus on in this upcoming session. So that's the broader context. Focusing now on the city's preparation. So, a city has two legislative documents that guide our engagement in the state legislative process. The first document is our legislative agenda, and that lists the top two, sometimes three to five priorities for the city. These are issues that the city is going to take a direct or primary lead in advancing, and have a direct nexus to city governance. Don't worry, it's not distracting. So, the legislative agenda is the document that we want our state legislators to focus on. These are the issues that we are going to use to measure our success, in terms of whether we accomplished our objectives within the legislative biennium. The second document is our policy manual, and this is intended to be more of a reference document. It's a longer document; there's not necessarily a limit on the size. It's any position that the city wants to determine in advance, based on issues we anticipate may come up during session. So it's intended to be a reactive document, and allows us to engage in a timely way when the legislative process is very fast-paced. So, both of these documents are developed with a two-year legislative cycle in mind. So, we do that for the 25, I guess. The documents will say 25-26, because those are the calendar years that they apply to. The state budget cycle is 25-27, because the fiscal year runs from July to June. I want to specify that, because that can get a little confusing. It's not a typo; it's intentional. We do update the documents halfway through the biennium. So, though these are what we hope to accomplish over the next two years, if something is accomplished, we would then remove it and update the documents. Next slide. So, on the screen are the draft priorities for the 25-26 Legislative Cycle. You will notice that there are more than five, and if you were paying attention, then you'll know that I just recommended that we have no more than five priorities. I will address that. Thank you for that really good question. I also want to note that, I want to be intentional when I say that these are draft priorities, and that's because these are being recommended for your consideration, for your comment, and for your feedback. So if you see something here tonight that you have more questions about, or you don't agree should be a city priority, this is the venue that we're looking for your input as to whether these are correct or not. So, the first priority is a request to complete the safety improvements along State Route 18. The funding that was allocated to this corridor in the last revenue package was intended to complete the corridor, but because costs have increased so substantially, that funding will now only complete a portion from, what is it, Deep Creek to Tiger Mountain Summit, and the two roundabouts at Issaquah Hobart Road. So the portion that is now unfunded is from the summit down to Issaquah Hobart Road. And it's expected to cost somewhere in the ballpark of $900 million. It's a really, really massive project. I say "in the ballpark" because that's a very preliminary estimate, and realistically, the construction for that portion of the road won't be able to begin until the construction on the first phase is complete. So we're several years out from realistically needing that money, and yet we know with a dollar size of that magnitude, it's going to take several years to identify funding for that. So this is a request that's being made as part of the broader coalition, the Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition, CLTC, and they are doing outreach to legislators, both in the region as well as statewide, to help everyone understand the importance of the safety improvements to Highway 18. The second priority is a request for the state to fix the pro-construction of city finances. Of course, the cap on the property tax growth has meant that that revenue stream can't keep pace with inflation, and that limitation has only compounded over the years. We're at the point now where even fixing that cap isn't going to solve the problem. And so the request is not only to fix that cap, but also to look for other solutions. So increase the direct distribution to cities for one of the city's largest cost drivers, which is public safety. Or through other means, realistically, direct distributions to cities within the current budget, state budget framework or climate, is going to be very challenging. The reason that this is a priority item is because state budget writers are already starting to talk about new revenue streams for the state. And so if there is going to be a new revenue opportunity at the state, we want to make sure that the state understands these challenges are happening at the city level as well. And so either new revenue tools for cities or direct distribution, there needs to be some type of solution. So we've listed options, because we want to be flexible with what that outcome could, we want to be flexible with how we arrive at the outcome of additional resources. The third priority is a request for $250,000 from the capital budget for technology to improve the safety and care for individuals incarcerated in the jail. So there's two different types of technology that this is envisioned to support. And we don't know yet which one makes the most sense. There's still a little bit more fact-finding that we need to be doing to hone in on this request specifically. But the first would be a body scanner. My understanding is it's a little bit like a metal detector, but it scans for contraband substances. And so the intent is to limit the drugs that would make it into the jail, while also limiting the need to do more complete strip search. The other technology is a little bit like a smoke detector, but it detects rapid changes in heart rate, in order to provide more consistent care for inmates, rather than needing to have someone, you know, monitor 24/7, that the smoke detector, I'll call it, is able to have that monitoring happening 24/7. Both of these are technology that can help in the operations of the jail, in improving the inmates' health conditions. As I mentioned, we're still kind of fleshing out whether there could be available grant programs, in which we would want to make sure that we've pursued that opportunity. But wanted to bring the idea before the council, both because costs to run the jail are so significant, that anything we can do to improve conditions and limit liability would be helpful, and because there are so few city-owned jails, the state is not, this is not something that's on the state's radar. And so bringing forward something that is unique to the city and a unique challenge that you all face, I think, is helpful. The next priority is being made in coordination with the East City Gov Alliance. Issaquah is one of the principal partners of the alliance, and they're planning to do an upgrade of their building permit system, or online digital permitting system, called My Building Permit. To revamp the front end and to build a new back-end system costs, they've received estimates at $5.4 million, and so their request is for the state to match the local investment, dollar for dollar, which would be a $2.7 million request of the state. That is a really large request from the state. And the only reason that it is within the realm of feasible is because it would be requested as part of a coalition. So this is something that multiple jurisdictions around the state would be advancing, and that they're considering, just like you are, as one of their legislative priorities. The benefit to the state in investing in a program like this is, for years, state legislators have been saying that permit streamlining and improving permit processing timelines is something that's going to help in the expediting of housing construction, and a permitting system that is not constantly being changed by a separate private provider, which is what the back-end system is now, will improve the permit processing timelines. There's also cost savings involved for the jurisdictions that utilize the program. So, can go into much more detail about that, but I'm going to move on to the next priority, which is twofold. It is two different types of, or two different park projects that the city is looking to advance. The first is the Creeks-to-Peaks Activation, which would be a $100,000 request from the state capital budget, and that would initiate this project. The second is a $250,000 request for the Rainier Trail Dog Park. And as I understand, the dog park, it's considered fully funded based on initial estimates, but with most projects these days, when you go out to actually bid, there's a higher cost than the original estimate, and what the original project was funded at. And so this request is intended to provide some margin for, to be able to deliver the project within the existing resources. And then if there are additional, or if there is excess capacity, then there would be the opportunity to add additional amenities to that project. Both of these projects are really visible to the community, and so that is a benefit to capital requests made to the state, as you have community members that are going to tangibly benefit from both of these projects. I don't expect the legislature to fund both of them. They are listed here more as options. Think of it as a buffet for state legislators to choose which project they think is going to be most competitive or most realistic in the budget climate that we're facing. It's a strategy that Issaquah has not taken. Historically, we've identified one project, and that's the project we've advanced, because our project requests have been larger dollar amounts. Having multiple requests in a smaller dollar amount is a different strategy that we have not utilized before. The last item on the agenda is not new, and this is the sixth item, and the reason that I think that it makes sense to still have it on here is because it is not a new request. So this is not something that we're coming to the legislature asking for new funding for. It is a request for the reallocation of the funding that's been previously awarded to the Issaquah Opportunity Center. When the legislature funded that money, it was done so through a brand-new grant program, Behavioral Health Grant Program. Since that money was awarded, the grant program's been built up, and there are now strings attached to that grant funding. The strings attached to the funding that's been awarded to the city no longer fit with the vision of the Issaquah Opportunity Center. And so there are limitations on what we could use that funding for. The request of the state is really administrative, essentially take the money out of that grant program, put it in the local community project list, where there are much fewer strings, and that honors the original legislative intent of the Opportunity Center. We've already had conversations with Representative Callen about this request. She understands and is supportive of making sure that the city has the resources that were originally included for this project. Before I transition to talking about the policy manual, I do want to note that for any of the priorities that we would be making, that have a funding request attached to them, we would be doing more, we'd be fleshing them out more, and we'd be developing a one-page document that provides much more details. The reason that we don't have that this evening is because these are still draft priorities. And so when there is confirmation from the council that these are the accurate priorities, then we would develop those documents, and we would have those prepared for the legislative Transitioning to the policy manual, for the most part, this document is unchanged. There are a lot of edits, but I would say most of them are more like wordsmithing and clarification. I don't think there's any new positions stated in the policy manual. There is a removal to references to the COVID-19 recovery, and there was a recommendation that came from staff that Arch is advancing regarding providing flexibility and support for partnership with religious organizations for affordable housing projects. So that's something that should have been included in the draft version in your packet, but was not. So that's something that we would look to include in future versions. Next slide. So, as I mentioned towards the beginning, this is intended to be the beginning of the process, and so we're looking for your feedback on these priorities. The goal is to adopt a final version of both Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual in November. Following that, we would schedule time to meet with our state legislators and brief them on the city's priorities, and then meet with any other state legislators that makes sense based on what the priorities are. At the state level, of course, the election is coming up. Following the election, there will be the House and Senate Committee on Committees, which is the committee that determines who sits on what committees. And then Legislative Committee Days, I think of it a little bit like back-to-school night for the legislature. It's like a dry run of what's going to happen in January, and it's like the informal start of the legislative session. Bills will begin to be prefiled December 1st, so we'll start to get a sense of what the issues are that folks have been working on over the last several months. And then the legislative session starts on January 13th. So it will be fast and furious from now until January. So that, I think, is the end of my presentation, but I welcome any comments or questions, and I know there were some, so don't be shy.
Okay. We'll start with questions, and then save the comments for later. Deputy Council President DeMichele?
Thank you. Earlier this year, we had a presentation from our community court on the public defenders. The state Supreme Court is going to weigh in on the number of clients that a public defender can have, which could change the number that we are required to hire and so forth. Is there, I'm not really clear about where we are in that process, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't be including some kind of statement regarding state relief or the funding of those extra public defenders, if that were to come about. But I will admit, I don't know where we are in the process. So my question is, where are we in the process? And should we, in fact, be including some kind of statement about that particular necessity if it comes about? Thank you.
Yeah, a great question. So, we are in the process, we are in between two public hearings that the Supreme Court is holding on the proposed changes to the caseload standards. The first one, I think, was in September. The public opportunity to submit written comment is, the deadline is October 31st. Association of Washington Cities has developed draft comments for cities to consider submitting, so that's available if the city wants to weigh in on that. And then I think there's another opportunity for public comment in November. Following that, there's not necessarily a clear deadline, as far as when the court then is going to make a decision about the caseloads. Some would think that perhaps it'll be in January or maybe in April. So it's not certain whether there will be a decision made in time for the state to develop their budget in response to that decision. At the same time, for the legislature to pass any law that says what the caseload standards should be, almost a moot point, because anyone is going to adhere to what the judiciary has said. So, your point, though, is valid. The state, whatever the caseload standards are, it's worth the city advocating that there be adequate funding for whatever those standards are, especially considering there's not adequate funding for the current standards. Yes?
City Administrator?
Council President, members of the council, good evening. The mayor is preparing comments for the October 31st deadline, working with the city attorney. We'll make a copy of that available to you once it's submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. On the My Building Permit item, you mentioned in your comments that the requested funding would get us away from a system where there were changes being made to the backends of the software by a private provider. Does that mean that there would be a different ownership model for the software? Or what, could you elaborate more on that?
Yes, yes. So, East City Gov Alliance created the front-end system for My Building Permit, so that has been developed. It, I think of it, my technology understanding is very basic, so I think of it like a sandwich. The front end- The front-end system is one slice of bread, the back-end system is another. And the back-end system, every jurisdiction that uses My Building Permit has to contract with one of six or seven private companies. So there is no option for there is no public option to match to My Building Permit. So anyone who contracts with I don't even know the name of one of the companies, but they could be bought by someone else, and their responsibility is not to the customers. It's to their their board or their shareholders or whatever their organization structure is. So the idea is to have My Building Permit create their own upgrade the front-end system and create their own back-end system so that they're not beholden to any other organization or private company. And then the because they would have their own system, they'd have more control over when the upgrades are done and what the upgrades are. And just the 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 ownership would be by East City Gov Alliance.
Okay, thank you. And the ownership would be by East City Gov, but it would be publicly available software for any city?
Yes. Yes, anyone in the state that wants to that wants to contract with East City Gov Alliance would be able to would benefit from the use of this this system. And that, I think, is that's a great, great point because that's one of the benefits and the reasons why this makes sense for the state to invest in is because it becomes then another option for jurisdictions who want to improve their permitting processes but aren't satisfied with what's on the market right now.
Okay. Do we know if the other cities in the in the alliance are putting this front and center in their own legislative agendas?
That's a great question. Everyone that I know of is in the process of developing or considering their priorities right now. I know that all the executive committee members of East City Gov Alliance, so that's Bellevue, Kirkland, Semimish, Snoqualmie, Kenmore, and Issaquah, are have committed to having this item brought before their council as a priority. It's ultimately up to each jurisdiction's council to decide what the priorities are, but they they're all being presented with this. We've also done outreach to every jurisdiction that utilizes My Building Permit, which is an additional, I think, two dozen jurisdictions, and briefed their government relations teams on this item. So I can't say definitively, but it is out there.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question on the the technologies for the jail for safety in the jail. You mentioned two technologies, the scanners and then the smoke detector-like sensors. Do you have a sense of how how much of the need $250 would address in terms of coverage of of the jail population? Does that cover the technology so that all individuals in the jail could be scanned? Or does it, you know, cover enough for all of the cells? Or is it really sort of one piece of how much we would need to pay for those technologies?
Yeah, great question. We the $250,000 amount came from the fact that the scanner is $250,000. So if it were used for the scanner, that's what it would it would purchase one scanner for the jail, and that would be used for any during any intake. I don't know how much each of the individual monitors cost, and so I'm not sure how many cells that would then cover. But at least now, my my understanding is not necessarily that it would purchase both, but we're trying to figure out it's we know that there has historically been grant funding available for that type of scanner. And so if there is, then we would want to use grant funding for the scanner and then pursue state funding for the for the ceiling monitors. If if there isn't grant funding available, then the body scanner may be a better first step.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I have a couple of questions, some of the same questions that Councilmember Hunt you had emailed in earlier. So my first question was about the direct direct distribution to jurisdictions for public safety. And you you kind of talked about the value of there being kind of flexibility in our words there. I was wondering if you could just expand on that a little bit. It seemed like almost like a sentence I would expect in the policy manual, kind of like broad, applying to multiple jurisdictions, whereas I've always thought of our legislative agenda as particular to Issaquah, not to jurisdictions generally. So I was just could you expand a little bit more on that point?
Yeah, yeah, I I think the observation is really astute because the city financial challenges are they are unique to Issaquah in the sense that not every city has the same budget challenges, but they're they're not unique to Issaquah in the sense that every city has budget challenges right now. The so this the specific request would be there every city gets a formulaic distribution from the criminal justice assistance account. And so there one of the ideas is to request an increase to that amount that gets distributed statewide. So it would go to every jurisdiction. Another idea is to change the the way that marijuana cannabis revenues are calculated and to increase the amount then that would go to cities. Last year, there was a bill brought forward that would allow jurisdictions to implement a public safety sales tax councilmanically. Currently, that can be implemented by a vote of the people. So there's, I think, different ways to pursue it. I think the reason that it that it's on the city's legislative agenda as one of the top priority items is because the city's in a in a challenging state financially. Not every city is. And so Association of Washington Cities does have this as one of their priorities. And what they're looking for is jurisdictions that are willing to come forward to be kind of help tell the story of why this is so important. What does this mean? What's going to happen in cities around the state if there aren't changes made? So I think to your point, Councilmember Hall, it could very well be a policy manual item. The reason that it, I think, makes sense as a priority item is because we this is communicating to our state legislators, we need you to focus on this. We we need you to be part of the the team that's looking for the solution, not just when a solution gets brought forward saying, yeah, that works.
So what would we think about? I really appreciate kind of the specific examples there. And I'm sure there are many other ideas floating around the legislature. But what would we think about having that kind of broad statement but then saying something like, for example, or like these methods that have been considered previously or or something like that? I just feel like it there's probably value in being specific in the agenda. I mean, I guess our I guess my question is, are we are we wanting to just stay away from that at the policy or the legislative agenda level and then speak to that when we're talking with our legislators? Or is there value in having being more specific in this document?
We we can definitely be more specific in this document. I don't think there's necessarily a downside to that, but I would envision that in any conversation with our legislators, we're going to be talking more specifics. And and not just what the solutions are. I think those are what some of the solutions could be. I think really what our message needs to be is these are the problems. This is where our hands are tied behind our back. This is where like we don't have a solution. Our these are the costs that we're seeing rise. These are our limited revenue options. We don't want to tell you how to fix this problem, but this is a problem. Here are some ideas. So I think I don't think there's a downside in listing some potential solutions, but I think the bigger message that we want to carry to Olympia is this is a problem that needs to be addressed, and this is what the problem looks like for Issaquah.
City Administrator?
Yes, in discussing the proposed agenda with Mayor Polly, she was very interested in pursuing this. As I think, as Shelley has mentioned, the Association of Washington Cities has put this out there as one of their priorities but is looking for other cities to step forward. I mean, it's one thing for the association to take these positions. It's another thing for a city actually experiencing some of these challenges to step forward. So it's included here for Issaquah to step forward. And I think the question for the council, given the other legislative priorities, are you comfortable in support of of doing that? And be a leader in the state in this discussion versus just one of many chiming in.
Okay, absolutely. I appreciate the additional detail, and kind of that sounds like a good discussion for us to have as council. Couple other questions. I was hoping someone could talk to me a little bit more about what Creeks to Peaks activation would mean if there's something specific in mind there or if we're being broad on purpose.
Thanks, Shelley. I noticed the look my way. Yeah, happy to. Jeff Watling, Parks Community Services Director. A little bit of backstory, I guess, what Creeks to Peaks is. Services and Safety in Parks Committee has heard a little of this. They're going to hear more of it tomorrow night as we bring the the draft Park Strategic Plan to them for consideration to recommend to all of you. This is, I guess, a little bit of a preview of that document. So as we did that work and engaged with the community and quite frankly, engaged with you a lot in some of our pre-conversations when we launched the park plan, the Green Necklace, which has lived a great life, had many different definitions by many different people. And there was a desire and an interest to bring clarity to what is the Green Necklace? And what does that mean? Is that just central Issaquah? Is that the open space around us? And that really led us in the engagement effort to come up with how do we redefine the Green Necklace? And how do we define something that really feels more like Issaquah's park system? And so that is the origin or think of Creeks to Peaks. Issaquah's Creeks to Peaks Park System is really the rebranding of the Green Necklace. Our system's not a necklace. Our system is a mesh of trails. There's a desire to get through town. There's a desire to get up into the open space. And so this activation is in taking how do we take something that we rename in a park plan and do a first implementation? That, I think, is still to be defined, as Shelley was saying. But if it is something that we want to seek funding for, I would imagine this is a mix of some branding work. We have brainstormed some projects. One of those projects we would consider is what's known as the Three Trails Intersection, where East Lake-Samhain Trail, Rainier Trail, and Juniper Trail meet right there at Gilman. We have a scramble. What if we did a install a what if we branded that intersection and created asphalt art that began to really define Creeks to Peaks? As that is a really key intersection to what we're trying to do throughout our whole park system. So that's an idea. Again, I think what is before you is an idea. If it's something we want to consider, we'll put more work in to defining it.
Okay, so then the idea would be that we have these ideas, but once the legislative agenda is finalized, we would have something concrete in there for Peaks to Creek Action.
Correct.
Okay. I have a question about Dog Park, too, so you might as well stay. I have a few more, is that okay, Council? Keep going, okay. So, okay, so it sounds like the funding request there is for some flexibility to anticipate potential overruns. But we're so it's $250,000, is that right? I guess, can you remind me how much the Dog Park was? It just seems like a pretty sizable amount for overruns, but maybe I'm not judging the scale of the project.
Yeah, welcome to Construction 2024, 2025. Right now, we have just under $500,000 in the budget for the Dog Park. So again, we're anticipating that's fully funded as we I think as the state has seen, as we've certainly seen with Hillside Park Bid Award, with the recent ARPA Projects Award that we did, what we're seeing in Public Works. It's a very tough bid climate to estimate. So this idea is, do we proactively consider some additional funding in the off-chance when we take that out to bid that we need to seek additional funding?
I guess then follow-up question for Shelley. Do you know if this is a common kind of request to make of the legislature? Kind of off-chance funding that bidding is challenging?
You know, I'm not aware of whether this is something that's consistently brought forward, but I do know that in recent years, because projects are continuing to come in greater than they have been estimated, that projects have come back then to ask for more money because so we've seen that pretty consistently over the last several budget cycles. This is, I think, being proactive so that the costs don't increase because the project timeline gets pushed out. So it's a little bit more of a it's a different take on the same type of requests that the legislature has been funding. I will say the to the great, great question. We can't just have a funding request for a nebulous request. I mean, we we have to have specifics. The legislature has a very specific form we have to fill out. We have to be able to quantify what's going to be delivered as a public benefit for state tax dollars. So that will need to be refined before we're if we would be successful in this.
Okay, that's heartening. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So earlier, you had also said that this would kind of in a in a way serve as like a buffet for the legislators to be able to pick and choose. I guess my question is, where's our buffet as council? I like are there options that we can consider for this bucket, understanding what the needs are across the city? We always talk about facilities, things like that. So it looks like there's a mic over there. I'm just curious if that's something the administration would be open to, us considering kind of the full range of possibilities?
So let's continue the analogy. So Shelley is here, and she's whipped up a wonderful preview meal for you. And so ultimately, you're going to be serving this meal at a legislative breakfast. And so I think tonight, we've got too many too many egg dishes, and maybe we need some more fruit and some juice to go with it. So Shelley has prepared all these things for you. You get to decide what you want to serve. So it may be that you give them two egg dishes to choose from at the legislative breakfast. You may only give them one egg dish to choose from. It's up to you. So you're Shelley has done your meal planning for you. Now you get to choose what you want to taste and then ultimately decide what you want to serve.
I think we've overused the metaphor. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And it sounds like a good question or discussion for us to have as council, too. So I swear, I'm almost done. A couple more questions. One thing I noticed is that the I-90 over-under crossing isn't on our legislative agenda document. So I was wondering if you could kind of speak to not having that showcased there? Because I think it's usually there, right, as opposed to the policy manual?
Yes, yes, you're right. And actually, your question reminds me that it should be in the policy manual. So that was an oversight, removing it from the legislative agenda should have been incorporated into the policy manual. So I'm going to add that to my note right now. The reason that it's not a legislative priority is because we are well, as you can tell, there are already a lot of priorities, and we're wanting to really focus on State Route 18. It's been difficult to advance the I-90 over-under pass in the midst of advancing Highway 18. And so we're just recognizing that that's the reality that we're facing, and we want to push on the completion of 18, knowing full well that the over-under overpass is a long-term goal, but it's that it's long-term.
Okay, that makes sense. I appreciate that. I think actually that answers all of my questions, so I'm done for now. Thank you again, appreciate it.
Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. Can we talk just a little bit more about the safety and care of incarcerated individuals? Running a jail is a expensive, but more importantly, it's a risky business venture to be in. Is there anything or we could or would we consider or can we consider expanding this beyond just the capital programs that you kind of touched on around monitoring? It feels like to me this could be a more valuable and broader initiative if we thought more broadly about it.
You read my mind. So this actually started off as an operating budget request because realistically, the the financial challenge to the city is on the operating side of things, not the capital. And so that's where the greatest need is. Considering the state's budget climate, we did not think that an operating budget request would compete well. And so to ensure that there is something to support jail operations, we decided to focus on a capital budget request. That being said, we can still make this operating. We could structure this in a way that makes it more flexible to say safety and care of incarcerated individuals broadly. And we're looking for opportunities for the state's support to do that. Some ideas may include direct distribution to help with jail operations, body scanner, monitors, support for the medical care. I mean, we could we could list out some of the ways that the state could help us. So it's an option.
If I can just follow up on that. So money is good. If I can just follow up on that. So money is good. Policy is also good. So are there some policy questions that could be embedded in this one, too, that you might consider when fleshing out?
Let me take that one. And Chief Shuan is here and certainly can, can add to this. As Shelley's indicated, this has been a multi-month internal discussion within the administration as to how to approach the legislature next year in dealing with issues with the jail. Much of what you're hearing tonight really was generated by a discussion with the attorneys representing cities that have jails. And those attorneys have sat together to say, what is the most effective way to limit our liability and to make sure that those that are incarcerated in our jails are best protected? And it is from those discussions that this technology idea came. We also have talked about policy changes regarding liability and have worked with colleagues in other jurisdictions around the state, have talked with Shelley and her colleagues. And we are not recommending at this point to move forward with that because we believe the, the difficulty is probably outweighed by, by the effectiveness and perhaps going down this other route. So this is a strategy that has been well thought to make the most of what we believe we could get resources out of the state legislature to help us with this. Chief Shuan is here. I don't know, Chief, if you want to add anything at this juncture, or just continue to be available for questions. You need the microphone.
Good evening, Council. Thank you. I can say a bigger part is, this is for the safety, as you can imagine. There's been mention of the, the monitors are in the cell for multiple different people. They've also considered they're similar to a Fitbit, but they connect directly to the medical office. So it's one, on pods when we have, like our dorms, when we have upwards of, you know, 10 to 15 people, you can't imagine how they can manage all those heart rates right from one scanner in one room. So they are thinking of, there are some other options that are similar, but it's all part of the same technology. The other thing, as far as considering the safety of our inmates, as mentioned, as far as operating, would be hours of our medical care, as we've seen from some of the incidents that we've had. And so this is what's been gone over as far as the best option for what can be safe for individuals. The scanner that's mentioned is huge as far as they note an object, and every single person that would come in would benefit from that because every single person would have one of those and go through the scanner. So there are just a bunch of different options that are definitely, as been mentioned, been vetted on what would be most beneficial at this point in time for the safety of our inmates and for the city.
Thanks. That's really helpful. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I'm going to move on to public comment, and then we will do feedback. So we have an opportunity now for public comment. Do you have anybody indicating a desire to speak online or in person? Anybody online?
We still don't have any members of the public with us virtually.
Okay. Before you come up, let me just read over. We've got a comment here. You're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone or step up to the lectern and turn it on to the red. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. So go ahead and come on up. We would love to hear from you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Jay Sternoff. My address is 22611 Southeast 44th Place in Issaquah. I have been a longtime Eastside resident since the time that the city of Bellevue was 10,000 people. I moved to Issaquah in 1979, moved away for a while, and moved back several years ago. I'm here tonight to speak specifically on the Parks and Recreation Investment Discussion, specifically in reference to the Creeks to Peaks activation and the request for, to go to the legislature for $100,000 assistance. I wanted to state that in the community I live, there was some communication that took place at the end of April, and Council President Walsh responded at the beginning of May. And I'm going to try to summarize, and I'm more than happy to submit these letters as part of the council record, so they're complete. So I don't get accused of paraphrasing, okay? But the president of Providence Point, a community of approximately a little over 1,000 residences in northeast Issaquah, wrote on April 29th, "The Providence Point Umbrella Association and Directors is fully and unequivocally opposed to this portion of the Park Department Plan." And specifically what I'm referring to is the Laughing Jacobs Creek Trail. In the next sentence, it was written, "The portion of the proposed plan is particularly egregious since there is perfectly simply an alternative that does not intrude into the property. Simply reroute the proposed trail north and up the hill to the sidewalk along southeast 43rd Way near 43rd Place, and then extend the sidewalk east to the interests of Providence Point's Forest Village and connect it to the trail system on the Providence Point, below Providence Point property." That was pointed out for several reasons, one being that one of the discussions of this trail was that trail be opened up specifically for the potential high school and elementary school that was going above Providence Point, and that schoolchildren could traverse that trail. Unfortunately, at least in my judgment, I wouldn't want my young children being in a forested area where people could do things that were not appropriate. And that's one of the reasons why we suggested it. But more importantly, Providence Point is a private, gated community that has existed since the late 80s. When we became part of the city of Issaquah in around, I believe it was around 2005, we were uniquely different than many of the other areas accessed. Area access on South Cove is an example. The city took over maintenance of all the streets. That's not true in Providence Point. South Cove is not gated. We are gated. We've been able to keep crime down because we have our own security people, and we may do our own, totally our own maintenance. Nothing is required by the city of Issaquah to service, other than the police department. And for those reasons, their city doesn't have access to that property. There is a utility easement that comes up near Laughing Jacobs Creek. It is not an easement to be utilized for the public. It is strictly for what was, it was designed for. In response to that letter, Council President Walsh wrote back, let me just find the, the area then, okay. It essentially, what she wrote back was, "Providence Point residents, the potential trail has been kept as a future project. History aside, I want to assure you, the city would not proceed with any work in this project until it was requested by Providence Point. Also, as a general approach to trails, the city would not proceed with any portion of the trail on private property without first having an agreement and the support of that private property owner." Anyway, with that said, that is what my presentation is. But I'd like to submit these two letters for the record of the council.
Thank you. This is generally not a question-and-answer period, so we're not able to reply. But I do have your letter in my response here, and I will personally be asking a question about whether that's what Creeks to Peaks refers to, so that maybe we can get a little bit of information. I will ask if there are any other, I don't see anybody else that's public. All the rest of y'all are friendly faces and all of that. I meant people I see all the time. You're right, absolutely. Okay, so I will go ahead and close the public comment and move on to council feedback. I'm wondering if we can start. Director Watling, just trying to get an understanding, does the Creeks to Peaks talk about this particular proposed trail, and is there any change from when you helped me provide that letter?
Yeah, so I guess a couple things. Thank you for the comment. The Creeks to Peaks definition does not speak to any one specific project. So no, it is not related specifically to the Laughing Jacobs Creek Trail corridor, specific to the question. And I would encourage you to take a look at the draft park plan. That'll be before the Services and Safety and Parks Committee tomorrow night. There is reference to that project, but it's, it's referenced, and you'll see the definition is very consistent with what the Council President Walsh said, and what we as staff believe is, though this is a concept of a project, it would not be something we would proceed with or move forward with without some future request from Providence Point. And if that was not to be taken, that the city would not initiate that specific project on its, on its own. Some context, that is a trail corridor that also has been thought of regionally for, since the 80s. So I think the desire of at least putting it, showing that connectivity opportunity within this park plan was really a desire to continue to show that opportunity. But as we all know, a park system plan is not a funding document. Those are not budgeted projects. There's a lot of community discussion that would still need to be had. Paramount to this specific project, none of that would happen until there was desire and interest from the property owner, and that being Providence Point.
Okay, great. So now, kind of going to the legislative priorities and agenda that was provided. Does anybody want to start out? Feedback? Go ahead, Councilmember Ray.
I always like to get started. I think, I think it's, I think it's really, the top five plus one is a, is a great list. Very consistent. Highway 18, I think, is still, I noticed that the bar was longer on that one, on this thing, and I don't know if that was intentional, but I think that, if it wasn't intentional, it should be. I think that's our number one priority. I understand the issues around health and jail, and I think that makes great sense. And and I think we're, you know, I think if we can be successful in moving those, those items forward, we will, we will have had a good legislative
Deputy Council President, followed by Councilmember Hall.
Yes, she's the decider. She's the decider. Yeah. Shelley does such a nice job, and thank you so much for also answering several questions and clarifying things. I did send Shelley a, some language that I would like us to at least consider. And it is, quote, "Issaquah supports increased state funding and/or subsidies for local organizations combating food insecurity, as well as those providing essential life resources such as diapers, cribs, clothing, bedding, and other essential child and family needs." This would be in support of two organizations in Issaquah that fit that description. One would be the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, and the other would be KidVantage. And both of those organizations, many of us recently attended the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank breakfast, and they spoke again about the doubling of the demand. The demand just keeps going up. It doubled last year. It doubled again this year. And the resources continue to diminish. And so I would hope that we would work with those two organizations. Admittedly, this might need some wordsmithing. And I did look up and see if the state of Washington has mechanisms for supporting food insecurity, or not food insecurity, food security. They do. There are four different funds that the state supports. And I would suggest that we could support increased funding for one or all of those funds. Maybe work with Shelley to get the exact wording. But I'd like to propose that we add that to our policy manual. So, and other than that, I think that we've got, I think we've got a very good list of priorities and excellent work from our lobbyists. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Well, I'll start just by agreeing that Shelley is the best, and Gordon Thomas Honeywell is also the best. So we're very well represented in Olympia. I also agree at a high level that we've captured the right buckets of categories here. I think there are a few areas where I just like, I think there's value in being a bit more specific. So I think the way that you described the need to talk about direct financial assistance for cities, for public safety, is compelling. I'm sold on that. But I would like to see a little bit more specifics. I don't know if just saying, for example, this fits well, but you'll, you'll find a way to, to restructure this somehow that adds some specificity there, because I feel like there is value in having the one sheet of paper that is very specific. This is exactly what we need, this and this. And then the manual more tells the story of opportunities and woes. So that's kind of my thought there. With Creeks to Peaks, I am glad to hear that there are some ideas in the hopper, and those will solidify as we move forward. So I'm okay with keeping that in here if we want that to be one of the two. Just making sure that, because, I mean, I guess at the end of the day, it could be very, it could be a very successful thing, lots of recreation in the area to drive economic development in the city, too. So there is a story to be told there, and there's value there. Having worked in a state legislative office that helps compile local community projects, I don't necessarily feel the same way about potential overrun for Dog Park. I don't think that would be a very competitive project to go to the state legislature with. So I would like to see some more, another option there for us to consider within, and I think if we want to keep, if we think the city says we would like to have kind of a menu of Parks-specific, or Parks, what is it, Parks and Recreation Investments-specific asks, that's okay. But I also would like to get a bit more of a sense of what are the other opportunities that we think are kind of in that dollar range that could be competitive, but also compelling to our state legislators to attach their name to it and say, yes, this is a good idea. Because they also need to hang their cap on it, and then write in their newsletters that, look what all funding I got. So I just, I don't think that saying that for the Dog Park would be compelling to them. Let's see. Other than that, I think the Legislative Priorities document, the Legislative Agenda document, looks good. I am, I mean, I'm glad we're re-appropriating the $3 million for the Opportunity Center. My worry is that, and it's not our fault that things have happened, but my worry is that the $3 million buying power is now much less than it was, and we're not asking for additional money because we don't, I mean, I imagine we think that's not politically possible to ask for anymore. So I'm just worried about that one, to say that for the record. As for the policy manual, I also think it's fine. There was one area, though, where talking about stormwater, some language was added. Yeah, it says, "Issaquah supports state funding and grants for stormwater to meet exponentially increasing requirements." It just seemed a little inflammatory. So I was wondering if anything had changed in the last couple of years, because it was just that last part that was added. So my only ask there would be to just evaluate whether we think that language is necessary. If something, if something really has changed where we want to highlight that in the policy manual, there are probably a lot of ways to do that. So anyways, those are my thoughts. And again, great job. Thanks.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So on the State Route 18, as well as the Issaquah Opportunity Center, those are longstanding, those are longstanding needs. I think it is true that we don't know exactly how much with, under current construction and under a current cost, those will actually end up being. I think that's for both, because they both have taken many years, and they're they both have taken many years, and they're both, they both have appeared on our legislative top priority list for many years as well. And so I did wonder structurally if we put those together and recognize exactly what Councilmember Hall was saying, which is, we really want these projects to be finished, we recognize that this is how they've, how much money they have received, we anticipate that there will, there may need to be additional funding, but really, at the end of the day, we need the state's help to get these really important projects finished, and sort of put those at the top together as longstanding priorities that we just need to cover. On the other priorities, on the financial sustainability, the city has had this request to address the property tax cap in our, in our policy manual for multiple years. I think it's risen to the priorities list this year because of the budget situation, but the way it appears in the priority list right now, it's really focusing on public safety. I agree with Councilmember Hall that I think adding more specific requests in the policy arena would be helpful. I think that, as you mentioned, Shelley, it's unlikely that direct distribution will be in the cards because of the state's likely budget situation, and so I think giving them, giving our legislators tools that would help us meet this, or things that we would advocate for, and then spending that time describing our financial situation more, especially since this is something other cities are going to be looking at to address their revenue, and so other cities will be in the same boat. We are potentially at the forefront asking for these tools, so I think we should make that more clear, and ask for more tools that would help not only us, but the other cities that are in this, in this boat. On the safety and care, that one, you went into a lot more specifics this evening about what those technologies are, and how much of the need that would cover, so I think, I think there is a real need there, I think we need to explain more about what the technology would be. I do agree with the digital permitting system upgrades, because it will definitely help address housing, and it's something that many other cities will also benefit from. In that case, I think it's also a matter of making it clear that it's not just for Isiqua, but it's for this whole regional coalition, and in fact, any city in the state of Washington. And then on the parks and recreation investments, again, agree with Councilmember Hall, I don't see that anticipating a budget overrun would be particularly compelling. If it comes in at the, at the budgeted amount, then we would have an additional ask of the legislature above what we had budgeted and set aside for that project, which I think could be a bit, a bit concerning, especially when budgets are, for both the state and for the city are so tight this year. So I think we're at a bit of a disadvantage this evening as policymakers, because we haven't yet seen the budget, so we don't yet know which projects have been cut or cut back, but I would like to potentially, you know, revisit this and look at, once we have more specifics on what projects have, had to been cut because of our budget situation this year, potentially, there could be a project on there that we could get the last, or we could ask for that last dollar to put it back on a list. But I, that would be my preference over including this potential overrun in the, in the list. That covers my comments, thanks.
Anyone else? Before you go, second time, I'm just going to check the rest. No. Okay, go ahead.
It was just a quick question, I thought I saw you writing, did you capture the over-under crossing for the policy manual too? Okay, perfect.
Okay, I will throw in my feedback. I feel like Highway 18 has been a really longstanding ask for us, and there isn't much new there. I feel like that needs to be moved down the list, because it's not something that is, that reflects something new going on, and we don't think there's going to be a transportation package happening quickly at this point. So I feel like some of the other priorities are talking about weaker potential wins on that. I think also, you know, from my perspective, the portion of Highway 18 that we're now asking for is already widened, it already has more safety improvements, it's just more to it. So I just don't feel like that deserves top shelf on our legislative agenda for this year in particular. Also, if we are including it, there's a typo in there, summer rather than summit, just, you know, yeah. Few other ideas, jail, I like it as a capital request, I think something that both improves safety, reduces risk, and improves our liability, and thus potentially our cost for future things, limits our liability, is really important. So I like that as a creative request there. For parks and recreation, I don't really like either of these options, especially not the Dog Park overrun. I'm wondering, we've been talking about, we just removed money from the Eck House project, and so I wonder if we might consider something like that as a potential ask there, because I think that recognizes an area that really has need, not just an area where there might be cost overruns and that we have to decide how to fund. And then the big one that I want to just stomp on a little bit is the financial sustainability. I really like that we are moving away from asking the state to kind of fall on their sword and agree to increase a 1% property tax cap, because there's really no benefit for state legislators to say, here, we're going to let cities take more money from residents, but the state legislators aren't getting anything from that. Instead, I really, I was on a deputy mayor's call the other day, and we were talking about legislative agendas, and Maple Valley was talking about how they are now focusing on cannabis shared revenue. So I looked up the information on it, so the liquor excise tax share is set at 35% for cities and counties, where 80% of that goes to cities. The cannabis excise tax sharing, first of all, it was started out at zero, but then they've increased it to 5% for cities and counties, with 60% of that going to counties. So if we look at the whole grouping, 54% goes to healthcare, 31% of that revenue goes directly to the state general fund. 12% goes to administrative related to cannabis activities, but only 5% goes to the cities. So if we potentially doubled that, or something like that, that is a smaller portion, this is shared revenue, I feel like that is a really good way to potentially push the needle on that, and especially for the city of Isiqua, more of that revenue goes to cities who have authorized use of, or allowed use of cannabis stores, so we have a potential extra portion of that. It also is, you know, some might say is, has a correlation with public safety, and so if we took that and tied it to public safety, I feel like that is a really good way that we could create a story around it, and not ask the legislator, legislature to increase taxes on residents. People who are using the service are already paying tax, it's just what portion of that tax is going to the state versus cities and counties. So that would be my direct plea. Also, Maple Valley's putting it on there, it was shared on this deputy mayor's thing, so it may be something that's getting a little bit more momentum, and I'd like to continue, like, supporting that as an idea. So, let me go back, I think those are my notes. I also noted down, we need to have a discussion about, I wrote down the buffet of choices and breakfast dishes, so if we want to come back to that conversation, you know, what city administrator Buck was, having the choices and whether all of them were egg dishes, I just, I wrote it all down, so maybe I'll cycle back and come back to that. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Council President. I would like to see both State Route 18 and the Isiqua Opportunities Center stay on this list. I think that there is a, I think it's important, even in a phase where we might not be making a lot of traction, to keep resolute on issues that are very specific to us and might otherwise not get attention in a clamorous time in Olympia. My wife and I are empty nesters, we live up on Squawk Mountain, and, you know, we started looking at other homes in Isiqua, and I would love to look at the south ended town, I'd love to look at Sycamore, Sycamore. It's entirely impossible, because the traffic is nightmarish, and there's no way on earth I would deal with morning traffic down there. And so we just, we have to get people off Isiquahobart Road, and we live in a bizarre, there are parts of the 21st century that I just feel very old about, and part of that is that we go where Google Maps tells us to go, right? And I'm sure we've all had times where we've been in a, in a, in a new neighborhood, and we're trying to get someplace, and we're following Google Maps, and we realize that Google Maps is leading us down through a residential neighborhood that is not designed at all to get traffic, right? And Google Maps leads our friends to the south, up through the city of Isiqua. And so State Route 18, you know, until folks in Maple Valley and Covington and Black Diamond, until they go put in downtown Seattle and get a route that doesn't take them up Isiquahobart Road, then we're not done. And so we need to keep our eye on that, and even, like I said, in a biennium where we may not make as much progress as we want, we need to keep on it, because other cities don't care as much as we do, but we care about it a very great deal. Similarly, the Isiqua Opportunity Center has been a long lift, and we have appreciated the assistance that we've gotten from the state, and we need to finish this project, and it's, and we are going to need help, and whether it's $3 million, or some other amount of money, I think there is a huge benefit to us maintaining our resoluteness by having these items be on our, on our master list. Thank you.
And I'll just say, just to clarify, I wasn't suggesting removing it, just moving it down the list, but Deputy Council President.
I want to weigh in as well, I think it should stay really at the top of our agenda, and I'll add two more things to what Councilmember Martz said. First of all, it's a safety project, and if you've driven over the top of that hill in the dark, in the rain, as I have done, that is a scary trip, and that's a heavily used roadway, and certainly the safety issues are prime there. And then the other thing I want to commend, Mayor Polly has put together a strong coalition of adjacent cities, and also Councilmember Dunn has joined that coalition, working to make sure that SR 18 is widened, and I think we need to, as Councilmember Martz has said, we need to stay the course, and we need to stay strong on that course, because there are plenty of other people that would love to jump in there ahead of us if they could. So I not only think it should be on our priorities, I think it continues to be our top priority. Thank you.
Can I clarify, the area that we're asking for additional funding is the southernmost portion of that project, which is from Tiger Mountain Summit to Isiquahobart Road, is that correct? Yeah, okay. Just making sure, because I have definitely driven the areas that they're working on now and all of that, but that southern portion has barriers in between the lanes, so I'm not sold on those portions, but any comments? Councilmember Hunt.
So there have been a couple of comments about if it should be at the end or at the top, but I think for me, if it was just a different section, because we have new 2025 to 2026 state priorities that are like the things we really want them to look at this next session, and then we have the things that we've wanted them to look at for every legislative session for the last, you know, six-plus years. So I think maybe just a different section on the page for those longstanding, and then for the emerging new ones. And then going forward, we would all have it structured that way as well, and you would still have those longstanding ones every time they're still on there. And then I agree with the comments about potentially the cannabis policy, I think those sorts of more specific policies would be helpful to put in that city financial sustainability section, and so plus one on that, and replacing the, you know, the direct distribution to jurisdictions, because we don't expect that to be possible, but having some other potential things that might be more possible for them to consider to address our financial sustainability. And then also on the Eck House, I've already shown my cards on that one, but I think those are exactly the kinds of things where we know that our budget didn't cover that cost. For that one, we have the amount for that part of the project that was already scoped out, so we have a dollar amount, and it wasn't possible to be covered with budget. So those are the sorts of things that I think we should look at and put in our little buffet of options, and then make it clear to the legislature that that is, those are options, but I would much prefer to do that than have the potential overrun as our, as our thing that we're putting forward.
Okay, so let's ask the question then, to give a little bit more specific feedback. A, are we interested in having a buffet-style approach to the parks and recreation projects? And B, are we interested in adding the Eck House and maybe something else? Do we feel like two or three? Councilmember Hall. City Administrator.
Thank you. In the mayor's absence, I think we, the administration would like to ask perhaps to come back to the council with, you know, with an egg dish and maybe some French toast for consideration, well, we've heard the issues regarding the Eck House, I think we've heard the parameters of, because there's a dollar parameter, there's the, you know, is this something that will happen, you know, the challenge with the Eck House is, what I think was $800,000 that was in the ARPA project, you know, that unfortunately still was a first phase, and so we would, I think, want to talk further with Shelley to see how compelling an ask that might be this year versus in '26. So if, I think the administration's heard you, but again, I would ask that we let Mayor Polly chime in with her priorities as well, and then we'll bring that back. We have a date set, you know, Shelley, for this to come back?
November 4th.
November 4th. So we'll have the, on regular business, Council President, I would imagine, and I'll have that for you.
Okay, how does that approach, coming back with the administration, November 4th idea? Councilmember Martz.
I want to add, on the subject of the Eck House, I was unavailable for last week's meeting, but I think my commitment to wanting to continue to make incremental progress in Confluence Park is well-known, so I would be very, 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 very interested in talking about what we might do to advance the Eck House. Part of that, slow but steady wins the race ticket. From, we need to put, sorry, I wanted to make sure, we need to put, thank you.
Okay, and then just as you're going through that, I think we've heard pretty soundly from the council that we're not as much in favor of the idea of the Dog Park overrun as part of that grouping of projects.
And I think, you know, in talking with Mayor Polly, this is an extraordinarily important project, what we may do is we may do some additional engineer estimates, see if there's a portion of this which is not funded, and so perhaps we might rephrase the, rephrase the question. A different kind of sauce for the expanded.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, okay, so how do we feel about all of this? I think one of the ideas was to maybe set aside the one of the ideas was to maybe set aside the, um, or call out in a separate thing, the longstanding, um, requests around Highway 18 and the Opportunity Center. Um, any nods or shakes of heads? Councilmember Hall?
I think it's perfectly fine as it's structured as it is. I think there's value in keeping Highway 18 up front, not just for the fact that there is a separate project. Lisa and Bill and our legislators need to also be able to say, see all the CLTC cities continue to have this as their first to rep Fi and whoever the Senate leader is. Um, so it's, I think just keeping the structure as it is now, but we're making the tweaks where we've identified would, would be good.
Okay. I will back down on that one. Um, and then, uh, I heard some specific or some request for specificity in the financial responsibility or whatever it was section. Um, yeah, for financial sustainability. Did the administration get the feedback they needed on that? Okay. Sounds good. I think we are probably good there. Anything else needed? Okay. We'll look for November 4th. Okay. Great. Um, going back to our agenda. Um, next item of business is COM 0044, Policy Funding and Services on the Housing Continuum. And this one's going to be presented by four of our amazing leaders in this area. I don't know who is starting us out, but it looks like Kristin Leeson, our senior planner, maybe? Okay. While she is getting set up, um, I will just mention that this is going to be coming in from several different areas, um, of the city. So we've got Director Jeff Watling from Parks and Community Services, Brenda Parker, our interim human services manager, Kristin Leeson, our senior planner, and Jen Davis Hayes, our economic development manager and housing guru, affordable housing guru. Um, yeah, something like that. So whenever you are ready, go for it.
All right. There we go. Thank you for your patience. Uh, good evening, Council President Walsh and members of the council. Um, yes, I am Senior Planner Kristin Leeson with the Community Planning and Development Department. I am here with Brenda Parker and Jeff Watling from Parks, who will talk about operational investments, and Jen Davis Hayes, who will talk about on the ground investments. Uh, we just want to, this is our housing overview for you all. It's our annual overview that we do, um, to show you kind of what's, what's coming and where we're going and where we've been. Uh, so tonight we're going to provide an update on the affordable housing policy and regulations, operations and funding. And then we'd like to get your feedback on anything and review next steps. Direction needed tonight from policy and regulations? We have nothing at this time, but trust me, there's a lot coming. Um, operations, we don't have any tonight. And then funding, the question for funding is would city council consider utilizing the inclusive housing investment pool or IHIP for pre-development costs? I'm going to start you off. Uh, as you know, the policy and regulation piece covers every bit of it. This is our housing spectrum, and it goes all the way from care for the homeless and policies for the homeless up to, uh, market rate housing. Um, the housing report card covers, covers all of that. House Bill 1220, which you all are familiar with, but I'll talk about it in just a minute, um, covers from the homeless up to affordable and rental owner, rental ownership, uh, affordable housing. Uh, House Bills 1337, 1110, and the revised 1110, which is 2321, uh, cover affordable housing up through market rate housing. And then we have the potential housing and parking analysis, which I'll talk about, which would cover subsidized housing through market rate. So first things first, I'm just going to mention the annual housing report card that we do. We've completed that again. It came out a little later this year in May of 2020, uh, May of 2024, the 2023 housing report card did. I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but just a really quick overview. We had just 114 units built in 2023. Uh, 71 of those were multifamily, 41 were single family, and two were accessory dwelling units. And the 114 is almost 200 units fewer than the previous year. Uh, but 26 of those were affordable units up in West Ridge at 60 and 80% of the area median income. So that's good. In July, we came out with the housing dashboard. It is a work in progress. Um, it is intended eventually to replace the housing report card that we have. And as I said, it's a work in progress, and we will continue to build on that and add more information as needed. So House Bill 2012, 1220, uh, it requires the city to accommodate for every level of affordable housing, to plan for emergency shelters, emergency housing, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. Uh, it requires us to adopt anti-displacement policies and to inventory and monitor our housing as we do. Uh, policies were added, proposed policies were added as part of the 2024 comprehensive plan update, which you all will see soon. And implementation, actually, of the regulations, we went backwards, was completed in March of 2024. House Bill 1110 and 2321, these required that cities of our size allow for a minimum of two units per lot, a minimum of four, four units per lot if it's in one quarter mile of a major transit stop, four units per lot if one of those, of any lot, if one of those units is affordable housing. And also the middle housing, not single family housing, single family is not included. So the middle housing, which is duplex and up, are what must be used to achieve the required unit density. So again, we have added proposed policies within the comprehensive plan update. The implementation is in progress and it's expected to be complete in June of 2025. We have a grant that is helping us to do that. Last one is House Bill 1337, which deals with accessory dwelling units. And in this one, owners cannot require the owner to live on the same property as we currently do. Uh, we cannot establish roof height limits of an ADU that is less than 24 feet high. And we cannot prohibit the sale of a unit as a condominium separate from the principal unit. Again, uh, in this case, we have our policies in place. We didn't need to add policies. Our implementation, again, is in progress and is expected to be complete in June of 2025. Lastly is the potential housing and parking analyses, those two to be done. These are pending approval in the 2025, 2026 budget. These stem from the diversity of housing report that was done in 2023 and from the Title 18 update, when we found things that needed to be reviewed. It's intended to spur more housing, development of more housing, particularly in central Issaquah, where we have seen, uh, very little, particularly in the urban core. The analysis will revisit expanding our inclusionary zoning, which is currently only allowed in urban core and mixed use, or required in urban core and mixed use central Issaquah. We will look to improve the development bonus program, which right now is very confusing to both planners and to developers who come in. So it hasn't been used very often. We've received 11 units and about $2 million in funding for that. Um, we want to consider the effects of adding a multifamily tax exemption program, which is likely to improve our ability to get affordable housing. And we want to calibrate some of our development regulations using the parking analysis to enable more types of housing in multifamily and mixed use zones. So that's what I have. I'm going to pass it on first to Jeff Watling, and then I think Brenda's going to join in.
Thanks, Kristin. Hi again. Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director. Just really quickly, um, as we now jump into the programmatic investments, uh, that we do within Human Services, um, I just wanted to take the opportunity, I think no many of you have not met Brenda Parker yet. Uh, Brenda's serving as our interim manager. As you know, we've been in transition, uh, with the Human Services Division as Monica's gone off to an exciting director level position with Skagit County. We celebrate that, but we have work to still do here. And, and thankfully, we've created a very talented professional pool within the division. Um, Brenda Parker's currently our behavioral health supervisor. Um, I will, um, pass it on to her to talk through these three programs that really, um, uh, address, um, housing security and quite frankly, housing insecurity, uh, throughout the entire, um, uh, housing spectrum, as you see. Brenda, it's all yours.
Good evening, Council President Walsh and other council members. Um, I'm going to jump right in here. I know we're running a little bit behind. My, too long. So this is the Housing Continuum that I think you're all familiar with. And I'm going to be talking about each of the, the emergency housing program, Human Services Grants, and the Behavioral Health Program. So first of all, just a update about the emergency housing program. As you know, this was a pilot program with, um, serving over 40 participants during this time period. It closed August 31st, 2024. Uh, I have a few stats here about some of the, the, um, outcomes that we had. But what I really wanted to highlight was, at the time of the closing, we had still 11 participants in the program. And since we no longer have the emergency housing program staff, the Behavioral Health Program has been able to continue working with at least just over half of those participants in various places. We will also still continue to work with the motel for severe weather as that approaches quickly. And then we have the emergent, or I'm sorry, the Issaquah Police Department still able to utilize emergency needs. Um, we feel, as we continue to evaluate the data here, we feel that overall this was a successful pilot. There were absolutely valuable lessons learned, um, about staffing needs, about boundaries, about time needed to transition from a, a program like this to other options. And you can see that reflected even in one of the, the, um, outcomes here. It takes a lot of time dealing with people's basic needs before you can get to the category of putting them in a house. So we'll continue to work with administration to explore future options. The intention, the current intention is to carry forward the funding for 2026, but we'll have more. The next one I'll cover is-
I'm sorry, can I just quickly ask you to lower your mic a little bit? Sometimes it's really hard for YouTube to-
Yes, is that better?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thanks.
Okay. The next one is the Human Services Grants, and I want to just give a special shout out to our Hannah Roberts, who helped put some of these, uh, facts together for us. She is our Human Services Coordinator. So as you can see here, or as you maybe know from, from last year, we had $210,000 a year allocated to serving residents across the continuum in these Human Services Grants. And this represents about 38% of the total annual, uh, Human Services Grants. So a substantial amount for housing is captured here. You will also see in the report that Hannah included a chart in, with additional information on the grant recipients for each one of those programs. And then also just a quick reminder here on the rental assistance that was used in 2023. So there are no, there, there were no, um, allocations in 2024 in that program. And then jumping quickly into the behavioral health piece of this, um, you can see some of our data here, the 148 active individuals and services. But again, I want to highlight just a few other things here tonight. All four of the behavioral health positions were filled this year. We do have one of our behavioral health coordinators out on paternity leave until mid-November. So, um, a little bit short-staffed, but with the increase in staff over the past year, we were able to really see the follow-up services intensify. And I want to give just a brief example of that tonight. Um, we had, uh, just a couple of months ago, a police referral. It was a DV situation, and we were able to respond directly to that call. Um, we were called through dispatch. When we arrived on the scene, we had a, a mother and a child being displaced from their home. And so after that, the, the co-response calls are usually pretty quick. So we'll maybe spend an hour or less with our police department. But what I want to point out is then we were 40-plus hours of follow-up services just to this mom and her adult child. And so it's, it's very valuable to have this additional staff so that we can, can take care of some of these follow-up needs. And as a result of that 40-plus hours, we were able to find a program and place these two, and they will be in a safe space for up to two years. That was really great. We have also with the, with the staff been able to, um, strengthen our relationship with our police department. So we're going to regular briefings with them, spending a lot of time with them. And I think that that's just really helping our, our program to grow. Now, and not only though do we have police referrals, we also have referrals from across the community. So we see, we have all kinds of referrals coming in, whether it's from our community partners, whether it's from our staff, our administration. So we continue to be able to serve more people with the, with these behavioral health positions that were funded. You know, that was really quick. Uh, our plan is to continue the program development and evaluation, continue to look at the needs of the community and see what's next. We'll return back in 2025 with, with, uh, more updates and recommendations for you. And if you have any questions, I asked for Jeff to stick around, but.
Um, so would the administration like us to do questions on these two areas before moving on to the other? Not necessarily?
Just go to the end. Okay.
Okay. Fantastic. Then you are done for now.
Thank you.
Um, and we will pass it on to Jen Davis Hayes.
Hi, Jen Davis Hayes, housing, I'm sorry, Economic and Housing Development Manager. Now you got my title a lot messed up. Um, so I do have a, I'm the only one that is asking some direction for tonight, and that is regarding looking at pre-development costs for the housing, inclusive housing investment pool or IHIP. So we'll get into more of that later. Um, so my portion is really about, uh, affordable housing, funding sources and on the ground. And again, we cover this part of the specter, uh, the Housing Continuum. And as a reminder, I know you, uh, we were here a lot last year to talk about, um, the funding. So these are the reminder of the funding sources that we have for affordable housing. The first two, the HB 1590 and 1406, we have, um, allocation for the 21 through 24, uh, budget years of how we are going to spend that. And that's kind of the program investments that you see on the side. Um, and then the development bonus program is one that, uh, we'll be looking at working on next year. Um, so as a reminder, the, uh, IHIP, um, was, uh, again, created, thank you, uh, by city council last year. And so this was for us to be able to invest in projects that were going to bring more affordable housing to the city. And, um, similar to our other requirements for affordable housing, they would be required to be affordable for the life of the project and meet, of course, the, the requirements for the funding source, which includes 60% AMI and serving specific populations. We, um, worked with ARCH to create a system that we'd work, that in order for people to apply for that money, they would apply for it at the same time when they apply for the Housing Trust Fund money. Because a lot of times they're asking for money from multiple sources. And so we made it quote unquote easier. Um, we added an addendum on there. And, um, so there, uh, those applications were, um, except, were due in September. So since the time you, you, um, adopted this, uh, fund, we have been proactively reaching out to property owners, developers, anybody who wants to kind of hear it. I, I've been looking at, you know, folks that have been contacting our friends in community planning and development to say, hey, we're thinking about developing this residential project. And so I would follow up and say, if you're interested, we have an opportunity for you to, you know, access some resources to provide additional affordable housing. We reached out to send information to every single developer we contacted in the past, um, looked at committees and organizations, um, and again, of course, shared with our ARCH partners and have been , have it on our, um, website. Um, and then again, uh, ARCH promoted it as part of their outreach for their funding this spring, uh, through summer. So we received one application, which we were really excited about because we didn't think that we were going to receive anything the first couple of years because you kind of have to build up the pipeline. So we will be back. Um, so we have a meeting, uh, actually this week for the first meeting for our internal, internal committee to review with ARCH the application. They did a memo, which again, you'll see all this good stuff when we come back to council, and, uh, 61 documents, uh, to review. So, um, so we'll be, uh, starting that review, uh, this week and going back and forth with ARCH to get more information and/or deciding on a recommendation, which will bring to Services Safety and Parks Committee and then the full council for consideration. Committee and then the full council for consideration. The ask was for a little less than $500,000 from Leo House. There is a property they want to purchase that is currently a privately-owned, development-disabled cohousing home. And so again, we'll come back with more information. One of the things that, since I am working on affordable housing and redevelopment in Central Issaquah, just trying to show you a little bit of the things I'll be working on next year. And so again, of course, continue to build the awareness of the IHIP, making sure we track the affordable housing revenue. It, you know, the, since it's based, well, part of it is based on sales tax revenue, we did see a little bit less than we thought. We thought originally it was going to be 2.5 per year, and we reforecast that during the budget allocations to 2.2 million. We'll be exploring some other city utility connection waivers, which we have in the resolution, but we don't have in code. We'll be working with our friends again in how, Community Planning and Development on Housing Analysis Project if that gets approved, and figuring out how we can support the missing middle, reaching out to developers. The Development Bonus Fee Investment Criteria, again, that's that close to $2 million, which has some criteria saying it can be for this or that, but doesn't have, you know, decision-making for us as a city. And so we'll work with Parks and Community Planning and Development to come to a little bit more clarity on what we can invest that in, because that, those funds are, have to be spent within 10 years. We have until 2029, so it's not like it has to happen tomorrow. But if there's a project that, you know, is in our CIP or something in the near future, we want to make sure that we align that with that. And then the last one is actually what I once, agreement on slash any input on, in order to follow through. So with the IHIP, right now, people are able to apply for funding to build a project. We have been working with some different nonprofits, religious organizations, and they are having a hard time getting those pre, that kind of, the pre-development reports and understanding if this is even a feasible project. Arch had said that there are some funding sources outside of Arch that do allow some funding to, and could be a match, it could be a certain percentage of what the total costs are, but it allows them to do some initial feasibility. And if it moves, if the project moves forward, there is a requirement to provide affordable housing. So if, let's say, a nonprofit developer looks at it, but then a for-profit developer comes in and uses, you know, comes in to develop the same thing, there would still be that attachment of affordable housing. And so it just can give our smaller property owners, developers, and some of our nonprofit faith-based organizations a leg up in order to, you know, try to move forward some projects. And really, a lot of the faith-based organizations are the ones that have land and are willing, you know, mission-driven to provide affordable housing. So it seems like something that we'd be interested to explore, again, not looking at large investments, but starting to look at what other funds have done and how we could do something along those lines. So that is, again, the only direction we are asking for tonight is, do you want us to explore this and bring something back to the City Council to potentially amend the IHIP policy document that would then add this? And that is the end of our presentation.
Okay. So I think we will start with questions and see if anybody has questions on any of these items. Deputy Council President.
Oh, so, Jen, do we know, the part from the packet that was missing for me, and maybe it's because we don't know yet, do we know how much funds would be required for, let's just say, the Leo proposal for pre-development costs? Or I guess I'm trying to get a hold on, what would this do to the overall fund? Is really my question.
Right, okay. So the, just so, you know, Leo House is asking to actually purchase, and so it's preservation of affordable housing. So it's different. So for instance, we've been looking, working with our Savior Lutheran Church. And so Arch has been working with them to try to line up how to move forward on this to make a wise decision. And so, you know, it could be, again, it could be $100,000, but again, we may say we want to provide a portion of it, we want to provide, you know, there's different ways to look at that. So that property has critical areas and some other things, so I think that's why it might be a little bit on the higher end. We could also look at, we'll do X, you know, the first two steps, and then they have to do the next three steps. Again, looking at some options might, I can bring back to present to the committee. The entire fund right now, we have about $2 million, and we plan to deposit about $500,000 a year, depending on, again, the revenues of sales tax, so please go out and spend more money in Issaquah, everybody. But, so that just gives you an idea about there.
So I, when I was reading the packet, I got the impression that we had a specific, so this is a concept?
Yes.
This is a general policy we're looking at.
So it's an idea, yeah. The question is, do you want me to go and spend staff time to explore this? Is there an interest at all in that? If so, I will go and look at some options, bring it back, see how the group feels about it. Again, it could be that you say only 10% of the fund could be invested this way. Again, lots of options. If it's not at all interesting to you, then I won't spend the staff time.
All right. Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Jen Davis-Hayes, if you could please stay up there. I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the idea to bring this forward. When we think about housing, there's always that gap between the funding necessary to get a project to, you know, the feasibility and the cost of the project. And I think you're trying to work that bottom part of the equation by giving a little boost to the people for pre-development costs to perhaps get them to a place where they can make that work. In your work, do you have a sense, here's a question, if, in your work, when you have been out there talking to the funders and the people that want to do these projects, is the order of magnitude for getting that gap fixed, you know, really, really big? Or is it $10,000? Do you have kind of a sense of what's going to get that fulcrum point where we're actually getting some housing built, I guess, if we were to put this forward?
So again, there, I guess there's two different things there, where the gap between what's feasible and what, or what's, what their financial analysis shows and what's able to cover their costs, that gap is, tends to be pretty large and can be anywhere from, you know, 100-plus thousand dollars per unit to 300, 400,000, again, depending on lots of issues around the property type, et cetera. The, getting people started in order to get some first-level reports to determine, okay, the development area is this big, the, you know, because again, with critical areas, you got to, you know, make sure that you don't, you understand the buffers, you understand what building type and the zoning and all that kind of stuff. So, so those reports, again, depending on, if you, if you go and you spend $10,000, $15,000 and realize this isn't ever going to work, then you stop, right? So, but if you learn that it may be possible, you may be able to do one or two more steps to figure out, okay, this may be feasible. So, so again, we can determine what we are willing to support depending on the appetite.
Okay, all right, great. So if I'm hearing you correctly, this decision perhaps is more focused on getting people to do that pre-evaluation to see what can be built, not actually getting to the point where they're going to put a project in Issaquah. Is that kind of a way to think about it?
So it helps them to get to that decision to, yes, we can move forward, which then, so it's kind of priming the pump, right, of projects, then they then can work with nonprofit private developer to do the last steps in order to do, you know, finalize the plans, define funding, which they will apply for IHIP and Arch and, you know, State and all a bunch of others. So, so it allows them to decide, to see if it's even possible to do.
Okay. So by priming the pump, we're helping them make that first couple of decisions to decide whether or not this is going to be something that they want to work on-
Right.
-and move forward with.
Right, right.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. So you said that some funders already do this, kind of pre-development assistance. Can you give me a sense of, like, who are the kinds of people that do that, or organizations?
No. I'm sorry. No, I would if I did more research. So Arch has told me, yeah. And so part of this, with one step down for economic development, it's been a little challenging to keep everything up in the air, but I can, I can provide more of that information after this.
Oh, yeah, that's perfect.
I mean, I looked real quick, but I, it's not sticking in my head of who. But I would definitely go and talk to them and better understand, not only in this region, but if there's others throughout the country, better understand. Again, this is trying to help smaller, you know, nonprofits, smaller property owners, smaller, or, you know, religious organizations, so.
No, that makes sense to me. I appreciate it. And it's not fair, because I didn't email that in, so I didn't-
No, that's okay. No, I just can't remember. I looked at it, but I, you know, right now, I can't remember the names.
And if you, if you are looking into it too, it'd be interesting to know if other cities do this in the region too. If this is, if this would be unique within King County, within the region, or if this would be new type of city local assistance. And then the other question that I have regarding the pre-development assistance is, you started to answer it in an email response to a question, but if, if we were to provide the kind of assistance to a developer, they decide, never mind, we're not going to do this. Do we see that as a cost of doing business? Or I think you had started to say we could design the program in a way, in such a way that maybe we get some of it back, but how is staff thinking about that so far?
Yeah. And I guess, again, it would depend. If it's $10,000 versus $100,000, that might be a difference where, where we say, okay, we expect people, again, to match, so we're not investing as much as, we're investing as half or less than half of what they're investing. But yeah, if somebody, we give somebody $10,000, $15,000, and they decide this is not moving forward, then that is a gone investment. But again, I have to get into more details with Arch about that she, they said there may be a way, and depending, it depends on how large, yeah, you don't know. It depends on how large the investment is if we want to do this, but you could put something against their property, say that, hey, two, you know, two units of affordable housing are required whenever this gets redeveloped, if there's a larger investment. So again, for 10,000, it's probably not a fair compensation, but, you know, we can look at, again, all those ways to see that happen. But, you know, we don't want to punch anybody either for trying to make this happen on good faith, but we're not going to spend, yeah, we don't want to spend half our fund trying for things that don't work. Thus, I think maybe we look at a percentage of the fund that would, could go towards this, and the rest remain there.
Deputy Council President DeMichele.
So Jen, you talked about doing these studies on soils and things like that. What about the process that organization has to go through just to determine exactly what they want to do? Do they want to do senior housing? Do they want to do disabled housing? Do they want to do low income at 30%? Though, you know, those kinds of different decisions just ahead of time with this kind of funding, would support that process as well? Or would, are we really talking about technical studies?
More technical. I think that Arch is a resource for them to talk through that with their congregation, with their group, whoever it may be. And I also think, as they work through it, to see the size of the units and, you know, figuring out we can build 20 units versus 40 units, determining, okay, do you want to do family units, or do you want to do one single-room studios, that type of thing. But, but I think Arch is a really good resource for that and under, and providing information about, you know, where the funding is for these various populations that they would serve. So again, our funding is for 60% and lower AMI, so it would be, if they want to come back to our, us for funding, they would have to, you know, or even to look at that, they have to be 60% and below, so.
Any other questions? Okay. And no public in the room? Is there still any public online?
We do now have one member of the public with us virtually.
Okay. Well, we have an opportunity for public comment to the one person who is sitting there online. If you so choose to raise your hand, if you're on the phone, star three, if you're on a computer or smartphone, you can look for that raise hand icon if you would like to make comment on this. We are always listening, so I will just pause for a moment and see if we have any public comments on this. Nothing coming up?
No.
You can always email us. We read a lot of emails. We reply to a lot of emails, so anytime. Okay. Next up, feedback. Who wants to start it out? Oh, wow. Three people were just jumping in there. Deputy Council President, then Councilmember Hall.
Oh, sorry, Hunt. Sorry, your H's next to each other is a problem for me.
So I've actually been through this process as a member of the Together Center Board of Directors, early on, when we did not know even what we wanted to do. And eventually realizing that among the 13 board members that were there, we did not have the expertise to proceed, we did hire a consultant who came in and helped us define exactly what we wanted to do. And then from there, we had to start the studies on the, on the project. And I, I absolutely agree that that expertise, hiring that expertise, doing those studies for small organizations, like I said, the Together Center had 13 board members and two, two whole employees at the time that we started that process. And so within that group, it's difficult to find the expertise, especially when you're dealing with affordable housing, which has all, is a whole field unto itself of expertise that you need to understand, along with all of the construction needs and everything. So I absolutely think this is a valid thing to have and to allow that money to be used for. I was thinking while I was reading the packet, it's a little bit like asking, you know, to choose between your favorite children, because it is a limited pot of money, and there are so many good things we could do with it. But I have no objections to adding this as a policy, that this could be an option for use. I have no problem with doing that at all, because, yes, I think smaller organizations, our Savior Lutheran Church is a really good example, and other churches in the area could use this, and without that kind of support, they can't proceed. So I would be supportive of it. But it's too bad that this is just 1% of, 1/10 of 1%, because there are so many needs in so many places that we could put this money, that it's almost difficult to decide what you want to carve out. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I have no doubt that there's definitely a need for this technical expertise. I think where I differ from Councilmember DeMichele is, this is a limited pot of money. We've already seen that there is money that will be effective in our community for the preservation of affordable housing. And as you mentioned, that was ahead of what you expected to be the schedule. We just started this program recently. We just adopted the policy. One of the policy, one of the main objectives that we wanted to fulfill with this funding was preservation of existing affordable housing, and we've already seen a project come in for a large amount of, potentially a large amount of the existing funds. And so if we got a few more projects, that would add more preservation of affordable units. Those are people that are already in the community that very likely would be displaced if that project was no longer able to be at affordable levels. And so I think this is a huge community benefit. We're already seeing it, we're already seeing that this fund is able to do that. So I would like to see us focus on that. And I have big concerns about the technical assistance or the pre-development, because I would like to make sure that this fund gets us- I would like to make sure that this fund gets us units, and I also don't want to be in a position where we're funding a feasibility study that the project is, turns out to not be feasible, and then we, uh, we have, you know, we have the option of either that money is gone, and there's no project, or we have to claw back the money from a community partner organization, neither of those is good, um, and so I, I don't want to be in that position, it sounds like Arch also is providing that early technical expertise and help, I know they have limited bandwidth, but they are able to, to talk with our community partners and, you know, explain the different, uh, levels of affordability and that sort of high level, beginning, um, beginning, uh, strategy, um, so I would, I would caution that we just started with the program, it's already seemingly successful in achieving one of our main goals, I'm primarily interested in using this fund to preserve existing housing, um, that is affordable, because, again, those are folks that are already in the community, and we know that there's a big pressure on, uh, new developments to be, um, market rate, so I would like to stick with that and, and see how the program, uh, plays out before we start adding, um, adding additional things that can be done with the funds, and if we do consider the pre-development, I would want to make it a small, um, portion that is able to be used for that, again, because it seems risky that we might lose that funding and not get those housing units.
Councilmember Marks?
Thank you, so, um, I have something I would love to see in this debate, and, um, City Administrator will probably tell me it can't be done, but, uh, I would love us to pick, so often we say, what's Bellevue doing, and Redmond doing, and what's Kirkland doing, and so forth, um, and those are all much bigger cities than ours, um, although I guess Kirkland's not that much bigger than us nowadays, but anyhow, um, what I would love to know is, as we go forward on a lot of these housing questions, I would love it if we had a half dozen cities that we thought had their act together in King County, or in Western Washington, or you pick it, and then tell us, you know, as some of these issues come up, how they're doing it, and, because it's such a, we're a small city, and we have very bright folks, but why reinvent the wheel? And if we can identify some cities that we think are doing it well, and I know there's risks associated with doing that, but, um, you know, it would be very, very helpful to me to see what's, you know, and we don't have to hold them up as exemplars, and if, they don't have to all agree with an idea, and maybe we're a leader beyond some other cities, but just, just have something to compare to, right? So I just put that idea out there, and if, if there's something we can do in that area, so often I will say, you know, what does Redmond do, or Kirkland do, and I realize those aren't precise comparisons, but maybe there are a half dozen cities that we could look at, um, and to help us see, so often in these complex issues, as an engineer, I love it when somebody else has already worked on it, and they found a solution that works, that means so much to me in complex issues, so that's what I will say on this issue.
I'll just throw in on that concept, I know that the Affordable Housing Committee has put out reports on some of the best practices and the things that produced the most results, and so it might not necessarily be a city that we look to as an example, but it could be, look, here are the policies that have produced this type of results, um, that could be useful as well. Uh, Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, I was, um, looking at the, um, comprehensive plan for some guidance as we're looking out to 2044 for, um, housing policy, and Issaquah needs 3,500 additional units by 2044, of those 3,500 units, 2,996 housing units are needed that are affordable to households with incomes less than or equal to 80% of the area median income, um, out of those, uh, 669 need to be temporary emergency beds, which are very hard to get built, um, in the 30 to 50% AMI, we need 868 housing units, in the 30% or lo, lower AMI, we need 1,668 units, um, no one is building these units in Snohomish County or King County, and, um, they're not going to get built unless cities, you know, try some other ideas, and I know it hasn't been done yet, but I think we really need to explore possibly doing this and putting it together, and if there are other cities out there that are doing it, um, you know, learn from them, but, um, these numbers are, are really stark, and if we're doing small units at a time, you know, we're building, we're building up on the, on the, in the Highlands, a 200-unit facility that has 10% affordable housing, that's 20 units, and that's a big achievement for us, you know, it took a lot of work to get us to that point, we're doing 20 at a time to fill in these numbers, uh, you know, we need to do a lot more than, um, even just the proposal that's coming out today, so I'd be in favor of us exploring it and figuring out how we can best hone it and make it work for Issaquah and our needs, but, um, I think it's something we should explore, thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Uh, first of all, Councilmember Marks, I love that idea, that's a really interesting one, um, as for the question, um, uh, before us right now, um, I think good points have been made, um, kind of both sides of this argument for right now, I'm not really sure where I land, but I do think it's clever, uh, and probably worth the staff resources to explore, which I think is the question being asked of us tonight, so, um, no problem with looking into it for me, um, I think there are a few kind of things I just jotted down that I'd want us to be mindful of, um, I agree, my primary concern would be that this would be, end up becoming a lot of what we do with the fund, and that's not the, the objective of the fund, so having some sort of policies around a limit on the percentage of the fund that can be used in this way, or, or some other kind of policy around X% of expenditures for the year can be for this, or, you'll think of a good way to do that, but, um, and then also some way to protect our investments, um, if someone decides not to go through with a project, although, Councilmember Hunt, I didn't, I didn't even think about what, what you brought up earlier about, like, we wouldn't want to ever be in a situation where we're having to claw back funds from an important community partner, so, I don't even know what to think of that anymore, so we'll let you chew on that one, um, and then, yeah, just the same request that I had during questions, so like, who are the kind of funders who provide this kind of assistance, and, and do other cities do this, or would this be kind of out of the, the norm, or, or unique, I guess is another way of saying it, um, and then, I don't know, the only other thing that comes to mind is, like, is there value, if we were to do something like this, would there be value in having some sort of application window that closes so we can review, review requests for the, these kinds of funds against actual requests for the number, like, units that could be produced, and, and have some sort of judgment made by an internal committee or by the council? I don't know if that's a good idea either, I'm just spitballing random thoughts at this point, but, um, you know, the, overall, I think, uh, it's worth exploring, um, a few other, I have a few other kind of like comments, like for, like requests for future information about some of the behavioral health stuff too, I can stop now and we can finish out the, I have, yeah, let's do that.
Councilmember Ray?
Um, thanks, I, uh, I was, um, very interested in listening to kind of everybody's thoughts on this, and, and in processing that, I, I have one big takeaway, which is, do we know what the barriers are to people building affordable housing, and does this help us bust any of those barriers? So I think if you say, well, one of the biggest problems is, I don't want to invest into, and this is almost a Deputy President De Michele's thing, I don't know how to start the ball rolling, then, then that's a barrier we can bust, if that's not a big deal, then, then, then it would probably not pouring money into this particular avenue makes a lot of sense, so I don't know that I have a strong opinion for or against, but I do have a strong opinion, and it, that is, we understand what the root causes of our problems are, and that we, um, take what limited resources we have, and we funnel them, and we focus them on the root causes of our barriers.
Okay, let me chime in here, and then I also have comments on the behavioral health and other areas as well. Okay, before we go to behavioral health, I'll ask for follow-ups, sounds good, um, so I think, I would say as a first step on this, I think a proposal like this really shows the value of having a staff member who's focused on housing, because that is like, oh, okay, we wouldn't have looked at something like this if we didn't have somebody who was out there seeking what, what more can we do, and what are the barriers, so first of all, kudos on that, that being said, I'm not really ready to be a leader in this area, I think there are so many areas where we have opportunities with our money, I, I would rather let a Bellevue, um, do this, and, so, uh, that being said, I'm also not sure that cities are the best source for that, um, I really can't choose with such limited funds to do something like this over building or preserving units, but the bigger issue for me is looking at this with, uh, potentially a staff member down on economic development and really limited staff time, I'm freaking excited about a lot of the things on the 2025 example efforts, and I'm not as excited about the pre-development funding compared to those other things, so, I'm not really ready for that, I really like the idea of the utility connections waiver, I think that could be really useful, um, and then the final thing for me on that is, hey, we're about to do a housing analysis, our middle housing parking analysis, I don't want anybody investing funds toward feasibility until we get that done, because that's going to change what is potentially out there as far as how many units they could build, um, so my personal opinion is that this is not the right time for this, that looking at 26 or later is probably a better option for this particular area, that would be my feedback, okay. Second round on any of these areas, uh, I saw Councilmember Hunt, and then, yeah, Deputy Council President De Michele?
Thank you, uh, I wanted to also add that we have also made a lot of changes through the Title 18 update, and we've made a lot of changes, um, due to, uh, the state laws that, um, that were mentioned that have to do with, with housing and, and permitting timelines and things like that, so I think we also would benefit from some time to see if those have made the feasibility, uh, more straightforward, if they've made it more, because that was part of why we did that overhaul of Title 18, our land use code was to make, um, permitting more, uh, you know, more straightforward, you would have more certainty that you could or could not do a project, and, um, I think that we are still assessing how that plays out, but I would like to, you know, continue to see if that really meets those goals and, and does make it more clear what's feasible and what's not feasible, um, I, I also, you know, having served on council, sometimes the feasibility study turns out that it's not feasible, that's why you do the study, and so if we go this route, we very much would expect that there would be studies that would not result in housing, and, and again, I just, with the limited funds that we have, I just, I'm not thinking that that's a good use of this fund, um, and then, lastly, the, the preservation of existing housing is not a hypothetical, there are, you know, community members, somebody that I talked to, that her, her housing is being bought by another, uh, housing provider, and they're going to be increasing the rates, and she's lived there for many years, and she's not going to be able to pay the increased rates, so this is a, this is a challenge that our community members are facing, it's not a hypothetical, and I would like to take the steps we can to address those existing needs of our current community members with this fund.
Deputy Council President De Michele?
So, um, just, uh, just a comment that, across the country, uh, part of the housing problem is land, where do we get land, and who has land? Well, unfortunately, um, a lot of churches have land, and they have small shrinking congregations, um, and it's a phenomenon that's, uh, across the United States, so you have, um, uh, a land that's available where it isn't available otherwise, and again, you have a small group of people, a small organization, due to the decrease in, in congregation size, so, um, even if we discover that this is not the best route to go, I think it's still a question, how do we help small organizations leverage, uh, what they've got, which is very expensive land that is just sitting there, and, uh, make it available for housing, so, I, I still think this is worth exploring, we find out whether this is reasonable or not reasonable, um, I, I hear what other people are saying, it, it is expensive to get these studies done, uh, and we have a limited amount of funds here, but the bigger question is, how do we begin to free up some of this land, help those small organizations, um, to begin the process of, uh, developing affordable housing? And the other thing is about churches, is their mission is to help people in need, uh, so often, they are committed to the cause and are willing to follow it through, but they just need that help to get going, so, um, I think the bigger question is something that, even if this turns out not to be a viable route, we should keep asking, thank you.
Okay, any other feedback on this area, I know we also had, um, part of the presentation on behavioral health and, um, all of that, Councilmember Hall?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, well articulated, I think, good points too, I still feel the same way that it's worth investigating though, so, that leaves me kind of puzzled in terms of what our direction is, as a council.
Uh, members of the council, thank you, I mean, this has been a tremendous discussion, um, we have to be nimble, we have to be creative, we have to adjust to our circumstances, because developing in Issaquah is different than developing in Kirkland, Redmond, Bellevue, Brenton, anywhere else, and so I think what you've heard, and I appreciate your recognition of, of Jen's comments tonight, is that we have a staff member whose job it is to think like this, and so, uh, one tool has been presented to you tonight, thank you for the feedback, we'll go back and, and process this, but we're continuing to look for those tools, because as Councilmember Joe said, no one's doing this, I mean, everyone has policies, the state of Washington passed laws demanding that we do this, but the practical reality is no one's doing it, so why aren't they doing it? There are many factors involved, we're trying to crack the nut in Issaquah, and so, appreciate the council's, I, I hear you rooting us on, saying, keep going, and so we're going to keep going with this, we'll come back at a future meeting, uh, with some additional ideas, um, but it's hard, it's absolutely hard, and rather than throw up our hands or wait for, uh, the State Department of Commerce to come up with new regulations on a bill that was passed two years ago, we're going to continue to work it, so I, I really commend Jen, uh, and I commend the council, uh, with this, so we, we don't need consensus, unanimous opinion, uh, but we appreciate the conversation, and we will come back at a future meeting and continue to work, as we've said, we've got, uh, an application pending for the first money, that's the most important thing, let's get the money out there, let's create the housing, and we're on our way to do that.
So what I'm hearing is, complex feedback on a complex topic is accepted, and we appreciate that. Okay, um, any other feedback on any of the other topics? Go for it, Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Well, first of all, Brenda, if I hadn't met you before, it's, it's a pleasure to meet you, thank you so much for presenting, um, tonight, I just had a few comments on the behavioral, behavioral health stuff, um, I saw, just kind of a request for future information, no need to respond tonight unless you feel like it's necessary, but, um, of the kind of active participants that we had in the behavioral health program, I saw that there was something like 29 participants who were successfully discharged, so that was great, I guess I'm just curious about kind of like, what are the patterns that we're starting to see in terms of how long it's, how long it's taking people, um, participants, I mean, to go through the program, um, and if there's kind of any information that you think would be helpful to us as policymakers in, in that space, um, the other thing is, that I've been thinking about is, and I know it's very different levels of acuity care in terms of, like, our program and programs like, like Racer, the regional crisis response, um, but I would be super interested in sometime in the future, getting some sort of comparison with Racer around, kind of, what's the need in their service area and the services that they provide, and then what's the need in our service area, and the kind of services that, that they provide, and maybe some sort of scale of, of funding, just as a way to compare, it's hard to compare programs across, community across community, um, but I just think that would be kind of helpful information at some point in the future, um. The, should I say that? The only other thing I'm, that struck me as, and this has nothing to do with behavioral health now, as somewhat worrisome, was the housing analysis and parking analysis TBD with the budget. That's been such a huge priority of this council. I also did just want to say for the record for the council, too, at the last Planning, Development and Environment Committee meeting, we talked a little bit about this and added our own feedback. And that was to really go big on this analysis and give us some of like the really inspiring options that are, that are being considered in other cities around America. So we can really compare about what is it, like, where are the levers to be super progressive in this space that lead to good outcomes? So that was some of our other stuff. Anyways, that kind of concerns, concerns me a little bit that that's a potential for not being included in the next budget, though I understand the circumstances around that. And I would just say that I hope if we're not able to do that kind of study, we can at least move forward with the recommendations that the EcoNorth or Northwest report kind of came to us with, or have a conversation about that at council, at the very least. Those are kind of my thoughts on that. Thanks.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I would like to just comment on the emergency housing program. Looking at the statistics, you know, we're, we're changing the lives of the 40 participants served. You know, it's not a big number, but every life is important as we go forward. I also appreciate the fact that we learned a number of things about the continuum of care during that process. And one thing that struck me that you said, Brenda, was we kind of learned how to, I'm going to say this incorrectly, but, but kind of how to work with this population in the sense that we need to respect their privacy a little bit, but we also need to have that, that touch to make sure that we're serving them at the same time. And I think that we only got that type of experience or that type of knowledge by working with this population and doing this program. So I really appreciate that. Also, preserving our relationship with the motel to address need for emergent and severe weather-related housing needs. We saw the storms come through North Carolina, Florida, Georgia, and cities that didn't have previous relationships with, you know, other supporting cities or other agencies were really in a pickle. If we have this relationship that we're building and these severe weather activities, you know, hit our region, we have those relationships. And that's so important in being able to pick up that phone and get someone out of the cold and into housing if it's a real emergency. So I would encourage that we continue that relationship as well as the relationship with the police that you highlighted as we provide that continuum of care for human services. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hunt?
This is the Chair of the Planning, Development and Environment Committee. I wanted to plus one councilmember Hall's comments on the importance of the study. We really felt like there were things that we needed to explore and that we wanted to have that study's results so that we could continue to make progress on addressing the housing continuum. And I think it, I think it also dovetails nicely with the last conversation we had. There are practices across the country to incentivize and get these kinds of housing built. And we have lots of different levers. And so I think using, you know, that study will be really important. I think looking across the other cities, as several councilmembers spoke about in the last conversation, should be a part of that study and it will be really important.
Okay. For my comments, I was looking at the 2023-2024 budget about the housing and parking analysis. I noticed there was $490,000 for the Title 18 future updates, of which $200,000 was for the exploration of middle income housing and $130,000 was for the central Issaquah parking analysis. So I'd just like to understand if we could whether those funds have been already spent and there would be a need for new funds or whether some of that carries over.
Thanks, Krista.
Hi, sure. None of the funds have been used. A, a consultant has been found, but a contract has not been signed for the parking analysis pending the budget. And then we've started our search for the consultant for the housing analysis. But again, put that one on hold. So it would just be shifting funds from the 2023-24 over to the 25-26.
So maybe we don't need to panic quite as much. Appreciate that. You guys put us in a tizzy there.
No, panic.
Oh, fantastic. Thanks, City Administrator. Okay. TBD. Yeah, okay. All panic then? Great. We'll have another conversation about that one. For operational investments. Hi, Brenda. Nice to see you again. Just thinking of the emergency housing program, we had a one-year pilot. And so I think I'm interested in kind of doing a look back and how do we decide if it was effective? How do we decide if that's something we would want to pursue if another opportunity came up versus, you know, providing additional funding to other emergency shelters in the area such as Snow Call Me or Bellevue? Obviously, not the same type of services, but before we put another dollar into that, I'd really like to understand what were our goals? What did we achieve? Was it a cost-effective measure? So I think that would be great. And then Jen, I would just say, I looked over the Arch Housing Trust Fund application and Issaquah's IHIP is all over that, which I think is a great way to try and recruit projects to us because then on this application, it's like sweetening the pot. It's like, oh, you wanted money? Well, guess what? There's guaranteed money over here. It's just, if you're considering, if you'll consider Issaquah, maybe we're a better option than going somewhere else. So I just wanted to congratulate on that. And I think it's, it's a really good option. Okay. So any other feedback on this area? Does the administration have what they need in all of our complexity?
Yes. And I guess I would just remind the council, you've already set up a pretty good program. You know, we will continue to look for best practices, but we are being looked at as a best practice by some communities. Because first of all, you retained the 1/10th, 1% dollars that many of your neighbors did not. And so that is a funding stream that is very vigorous that we have under statute have to balance between creating housing and services. And so many of our neighbors already look at us and say, gee whiz, why didn't we do this? Because look at what Issaquah has been able to do, not only in housing creation, but also supportive services for those that are homeless. So give yourself some credit. This council has spent many, many meetings looking at options, looking how to weigh other funding sources, looking how to balance the myriad of state regulations that have come out. And our neighbors are looking at us and say, gosh, Issaquah has a pretty good balance. And so we will always continue to do better. I think the one X factor here remains money. Developers need to develop to make money. Developers are not charities by and large. And so the difficulties in finding property at the high cost that there are, the difficulty of finding financing, the difficulty of developing in Issaquah where we as a community have said we have certain land use standards that perhaps some of our neighbors don't. And so you take all those things together, it makes it difficult. But your staff, I think, has been very diligent under Mayor Pauli's direction to make it work under those circumstances. So we appreciate your feedback this evening on the whole variety of issues. And we'll continue to keep you posted on all the work that we're doing, not only in community planning and development, but parks and community services, as well as in the executive office through our Housing and Economic Development Team.
Okay, fantastic. Last item here is good of the order. Anybody? Okay, I just have one item, which is that the administration had sent out an invitation for a middle housing tour, which is the first Saturday in November. I'm working on that because I recognize that might be a difficult date for some of us. So I will kind of seek some feedback in the background. But middle housing, it's great. So with that, I think we are adjourned at 9:10 PM. Thank you.